Thank you ever so much for joining us for this Leaders in Lockdown special. I'm joined today by the leader of Derbyshire County Council, Barry Lewis. First of all then, before we start and we get into these list of questions which our listeners have sent in. If I could start myself, how's this last year been for you as the leader of Derbyshire County Council in terms of handling the pressures of this pandemic?
I have to say it's been one of the most challenging years of my life, basically. And I think a lot of people probably share that reflection for all sorts of other different reasons. As a county council leader, suddenly you find yourself, you know, sort of thrust front and centre of a national, international, I suppose, emergency. And as a local authority, the size of Derbyshire County Council, you are very much at the heart of the public health efforts to respond to a pandemic of this nature. It's interesting, going back to when it first started, in fact, before it first started, having conversations in January, February of last year, talking about the fact it was over in China and it is coming this way, sort of thing. It just, yeah, I mean, I said to staff at the time, you know, we need to be ready for this. And my colleagues probably thought I was a bit mad at the time, but here we are 12 months later, having gone through the wringer of, you know, a global pandemic, which has impacted virtually every aspect of life. Yeah, as a, it's just going through all of that as a county council leader. It's also been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life as well because of the fact you are front and centre. You are sort of working on with, you know, such fantastic people, colleagues right across the county council, right across all of the other agencies, health and the police and every, you know, the emergency services. It's quite a remarkable effort, really.
I was going to ask about that, actually. There must have been some low periods, but some remarkable highs in there as well, as you've alluded to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, absolutely. I mean, the low period was, you know, just before Christmas, when, you know, we're entering into yet another significant deep lockdown as we were. And it was quite necessary, I think, at the time. But we were all rather hoping we were coming out the other end of that. And, but, you know, yeah, that was a particular low point. And nobody wants to be in that situation just prior to Christmas. But yeah, you know, high points now is getting those vaccines into people's arms, seeing the result of, you know, the sort of the case rates falling as well. And, you know, knowing that people are now protected, those key people, those key cohorts in the elderly and vulnerable now got that protection, you know, masses of them now have got their, have had their first jab. And that's, and that's hugely important in making sure that we can come out of this and function more normally as a society.
Derbyshire's gained a lot of national recognition for the successes with the vaccine uptake here. That must be something you're very proud of.
Oh, definitely, absolutely. And, you know, it's something we've been working very proactively with our colleagues in the NHS, CCGs on. We have a weekly meeting with them and interrogate the numbers, look at the issues and see if there's anything we can do as a local authority to help. And that's important. You need that partnership working. And I know all the MPs as well, we have a regular meeting with all of the MPs of Derbyshire to have that conversation, make sure that we know we're moving things along. And it's a cross-party effort locally, certainly. There's been none of this falling out over particular issues. It's all been focused on making sure that we respond and can get out of this pandemic.
What would be your message, Barry, to anybody who still hasn't had the jab at this stage?
The important thing is to get it done. You know, you may not be protecting yourself, but you'll be protecting others as well. And that's hugely important. But as we heard from Chris Witty the other day, there is the potential for, you know, another spike of this if we don't get this right. And you're not doing yourself any favours by avoiding having the vaccine. It's important that you get it. I had mine done the other week. You know, I'm an in remission type two diabetic, but still nonetheless on the new vulnerable list. So got my, it was painless at the time, a little bit of an ache in the arm. The next day, no great shakes, it was fine. And yeah, and several weeks ago, and I'm now got a decent amount of protection as a consequence of that. But even if you get it, it's still important to make sure that, you know, you're not complacent. You're still doing all of the, wearing the face mask, washing your hands, et cetera, et cetera. You can still spread it and there's still people out there who haven't been vaccinated. So that's another important key message.
How do you feel about the schools going back as well this week?
Oh, that was a major triumph, I think. And again, I have to take my hats off to all of the schools in Derbyshire. You know, put together a magnificent effort in terms of, you know, the testing. That was, that was quite a logistical feat that they managed to pull off. My daughter is back at school this week, she's 12, and bounced in on the first day, had a test. It was all done very, very well and well managed and so on. Next day, she's back at school full time. And yeah, I think it's time for them to get back to that sort of sense of normal. So it's far from normal in schools because they're still wearing the face mask, still having to do the regular testing. But, you know, that's the new normal. They'll get used to it until, you know, hopefully we stop doing that and we get back to proper normal.
And in the months ahead, I imagine now you'll have a clear vision of how we've progressed from here to make sure that all of this is irreversible in a sense.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, the roadmap's been established as we know by the government. And then there's the important aspect of making sure that we keep on top of case rates locally. And you'll have seen this week, for example, there's been a spike in places like Derbyshire Dales because of the infection rates in the prison at Sudbury. And that's, you know, sent the Derbyshire Dales numbers through the roof. But, you know, that's, that's one setting that's done that. And it's not the fact that it's in the community. So there's nothing too much to worry about there. But we need to keep on top of things like this and, you know, doing the, doing the testing and the tracing locally, which is important. I think the local test and trace are the best approach. And making sure that we've got those lateral flow testing centres, community testing there in all of our districts and boroughs across the county, because we're going to need that for quite some time. It's, you know, we're going to be managing living with COVID for, you know, at least another year. It'll be, you know, it'll be diminishing hopefully in the community and the vaccines will do their work. But we can't be complacent about this one. We don't want to end up back in the situation that we found ourselves in the last 12 months.
Definitely. So without further ado then, now we've touched on COVID, we'll get into a few of these listener questions, if you don't mind, Barry. So first of all, a question from Jack Orton in Claycross. He asks, with local elections coming up soon, why should I vote for your party?
Okay, well, I think it's track record. And, you know, as a local Conservative administration, we have done remarkable things over the past four years. We've reformed the county council, we've put money back into the budget for making sure our roads are better repaired. Put six million pounds back in there. We put money back into making sure that vulnerable young people are safe in the county because that part was diminished. And we've got an ambitious programme as well for the next four years. So, you know, £100 million, a capital investment in green infrastructure in the county, making sure that works for people. So, you know, we've got the Green Entrepreneurs Grant Scheme, for example, just released. So that's about community energy projects. So we're giving people the opportunity to buy directly from a community energy project and their energy needs, their power, electricity. And so we've got a whole swathe of, you know, manifesto commitments that are wrapped around this. So, you know, we're proud to have served the people for the past four years. And government's been ambitious about levelling up, and particularly in Claycross, we've just had a £24.1 million investment in a town deal there. And anybody who's driven through Claycross in recent months and years will have seen the transformation that's already going on in that town as well. And there's more to come for residents in Claycross. So it's all about, you know, levelling up and we're keen on that. We're absolutely invested locally as Conservatives to making sure we get that critical investment to bring jobs, to bring better opportunities to people in Derbyshire and particularly in Claycross.
You must have been delighted with the announcement of the two town deals in Staveley and Claycross in the budget last week. What's your vision there then?
Absolutely. I mean, that work's very much been led by North East Derbyshire District Council and Chesterfield Borough Council. Obviously, we work with them very closely on the economic regeneration potential for that. So that's our involvement as well as sort of the critical infrastructure, the roads investment and so on around that. But, you know, there's a critical mass building, particularly in Claycross for alternative energy skills hub there, which I think is going to be important. And, you know, we want to make sure that our young people in the region, particularly in places like Claycross, have access to opportunities and training for the new green technologies which are coming down, coming down the road hard and fast at us. And we need to absolutely make sure that we're front and centre of those sorts of efforts. But, you know, the vast improvements in the public realm that will occur in both Claycross and Staveley, you know, will transform those towns.
Okay, so next question, we're going to touch on the roads. And I know some funding's been released in the last week or so. Howard Burrell from Chesterfield asks, when Derbyshire has the third highest number of potholes reported in England, how can it be possibly right that the road repairs budget is being cut by £7.7 million this year?
That's a misnomer. That's central funding from the government around the pothole scheme. And there's been some top slicing going on there. So I was front and centre of the county council network effort to lobby government to make sure that all the county councils got their fair share of that fund. And we will continue to do that. And this is an annual tussle that we have with government. What's critical locally is that we've got double the amount this year alone in terms of capital investment going into our roads across Derbyshire. Normally, we spend around £22 million-ish on capital investment in our roads. And this year, it's over double that and, you know, we're looking at around £47 million investment. In fact, over the course of the next three years, we'll have, you know, in the order of £120 million or more capital investment in our roads. What's critical here is there's two things. One is that we are also one of the best county councils, performing county councils on filling potholes and making sure that we do road repairs. And we're also, in the course of the last four years, we've filled in a quarter of a million potholes in Derbyshire. And that's, you know, over 200% increase on the previous four years. Now, that's one record to be proud of, but it's also one not to be proud of because what it means is the lack of investment in capital in the roads has been the issue, which is why we've been working hard to make sure that we've got the capital investment, which we now have, £120 million over the next three years, solving the issue with our roads at that level to make sure that in the future we're filling in fewer potholes because the roads are sorted. And that's what this is about at the moment.
You may have just answered my next question there from another listener, but I'll pose it to you anyway. Ben Hay from Clown, why isn't there more signage to warn drivers about potholes in Bolsover? He says he's recently had a repair bill for his car worth £1,300 because of this. Why hasn't more been done to fix the problem over winter?
Yeah, well, the difficulty is over the winter is repairing roads at all. Because if you're dealing with weather that's too wet and weather that's too cold, road repairs are quite difficult, which is why after every winter, you will see in the early part of spring that there are substantially more defects on the road. And that's certainly the case at the moment. What we are now cracking on with doing is getting our teams out there to repair the road as the weather is warming and the conditions are drying to allow us to do that. We still continue to do repairs, critical repairs over the winter, but they often unravel pretty quickly as a consequence of the weather as well. So if it's a dangerous defect, we should be repairing them and we do repair them. But, you know, I do apologise to the listener in terms of the damage to his car. You know, he does have a right to write into the council and make a claim if he thinks that is the case. But, you know, I can only reassure him, we will get on with the job of making sure that we fix the potholes. But more critically, that we fix the roads properly, proper resurfacing work of a quality that is long lasting and sustainable. That's the way to go.
Okay, next question is a highways issue. That comes from Chris Marple's in Chesterfield. He says, following on from a petition by driving instructors in 2018 regarding direction signage on the Hornsbridge roundabout in Chesterfield. He says, we were informed at the end of 2019 that £10,000 worth of funding was to be released to make the requested improvements. So far, no new signage has been put up. When will these changes be coming into fruition?
Okay, yeah. And again, a fair comment. The Hornsbridge one is a particular issue and has been for quite some time. I think everybody gets tremendously confused when they get to the traffic signalling systems on Hornsbridge. I know that's a longstanding issue. And I think there needs to be some longer term solutions. And I've certainly been working with the local MP for North East Derbyshire, Lee Rowley, on what we can do about the A61 more generally through its courses, it runs through Chesterfield as well. And one of the longer term solutions we're looking at there is to resolve the traffic issues that run up to the Hornsbridge by looking at the potential for some kind of flyover. They're not a straightforward solution, as you can imagine, because there are lots of other constraints that are in and around the island there. But it is something that we're looking at and considering the fullness of time. But we are trying to deal with a range of issues there. So there is a scheme in place at the moment to try and declutter some of the, because it can be quite confusing as you approach the island. There's too many signs, which perhaps is part of the problem. And there's a scheme being included in the capital programme for that and to install a better, more coherent signing on the approach to the Hornsbridge roundabout. And two signs have already been put on the inside circulatory of the Hornsbridge roundabout as to which lane to be in. So hopefully, we're getting there in terms of resolving some of those issues. But it's been far from straightforward and there are some pretty critical issues with that island. We're aware of them.
Okay, next question comes from Vicky Wood in Lower Pilsley. She says, will children's centres be reopening after lockdown, considering their funding was cut drastically even before the pandemic?
If there are children's centres that were open before, they'll certainly be reopening in the normal scheme of things. And, you know, we're trying to make sure that, we're still trying to work with the most vulnerable families in Derbyshire. So, you know, making sure that we have children's centres in places for families to access is obviously critical. And so, yeah, those services will be unaffected or reopened as normal in the way that you would expect as well. And it's working with, you know, all of our partnerships across the county in terms of health services and health visitors and so on. And we, you know, we'll continue to do all of that work in the vein that we have, just prior to the pandemic.
That ties in nicely to a question from Robbie Sivia in Chesterfield, who asks, can the council promise they'll try and invest more money into youth clubs after restrictions ease, like the Spire Boxing Academy here in Chesterfield, to help young people at risk of becoming disengaged with society?
Yes, I mean, we've got the Youth Activities Grant Scheme, which we've had running for quite some time. And as an administration, we're pledging more money as well into the next, hopefully, next administration as well. And we want to invest in youth services. We want to particularly invest in those services that are offered by independent and community sectors because they get the best return in terms of value for money. They also ensure that we're engaging more young people as well across the county and sports clubs and things like that. So there's sports action grants that'll be available. I'll give you a classic case in point. I mean, one of my hobbies is fencing and that's one that operates out of Claycross at Charlie Park, Wingo with Fencing Club. And they engage a lot of young people in brilliant activity there. So there's a lot of these clubs that are going on, are run by volunteers right across the county. And we want to support more of those because they have the best reach. They have the, you know, the best capacity to engage young people in activities that, you know, can be extremely rewarding and change life chances and opportunities as well to get really involved in things like that. My daughter's a very keen fencer as well. So we do like to spar with each other.
Because as well as giving young people that sense of discipline within society, just in general, a lot of people, you know, like yourself, you've just alluded to one of your hobbies there, will just be so eager to get back doing physical activities again, won't they?
Oh, they really will, yeah, yeah. And something that we certainly want to actively encourage, we work with our district and borough colleagues through public health and communities at the county council to ensure that we've got a good range of options and a good range of things to, you know, to engage people, keep them healthy and just enjoying life generally. And I'm sure people will be absolutely chomping at the bit to get back to doing activities like that. Goodness knows, I'm certainly looking forward to getting back to doing fencing.
Okay, moving on to a different topic then, more towards travel and Derbyshire as a tourist attraction, really. Joe Bunting from Chesterfield asks, for any future overseas holiday, would you personally, Barry, feel more comfortable booking with a local independent travel agency here in Derbyshire?
I'd be perfectly happy to book with a local independent travel agent in Derbyshire. I think everybody knows that what to look for when it comes to independent travel makers, travel centres is, you know, look for the after sort of guarantee. As long as they've got that, then you're as safe as houses. And certainly get the better quality of service as well with the local providers, I think. So certainly I'd be encouraging people to do that, absolutely. And of course, I'd be encouraging people to come to Derbyshire as well because, you know, we've got a fantastic county for people to come on holiday to.
Chris Map from Barlow, he adds to that really. He says, with people nervous about potentially travelling abroad this year, what's Derbyshire doing to improve the marketing to compete with the Lake District and Scotland? He says that we see adverts for these locations, but Derbyshire doesn't have anything like that. Is this something you're prepared to look into?
Oh, we absolutely do. And, you know, there's, I was just talking yesterday about doing Valley Mills World Heritage Site, for example, and they've got this Spirit of Place campaign running at the moment, which is running across all kinds of social media platforms, but has global reach as well to encourage people to come and visit us here in Derbyshire. We have an absolutely fantastic county, national park. We have some terrific cultural and heritage assets. And if you look at places like Hardwick and Haddon Hall and Bolsover Castle, Cresswell Crags, you know, in the north east corner, for example, all of that's going on up there. Through Visit Britain, there's a global reach programme going on, if you like, at the moment to get people to come and visit UK in the future. I suspect that'll be more a thing for 2022 than it will be for 2021. At the moment, they're also investing in staycation, so reaching out to our cities and so on across the country to come and visit some of our fantastic assets. And we're very much tapped into all of that activity. In fact, I think the issue initially will be the sheer numbers of people that are coming. And I know from the self catering sector that bookings are going through the roof right across the piece in Derbyshire. So we're expecting quite an influx of visitors from April onwards, I would say. And so it's going to be about managing that because a lot of people are still going to be nervous about travelling in terms of public transport. And so we'll probably see an uptick in the number of vehicles. So we've got to manage that. And again, I was talking about the money we're investing in our highways as being aware of the fact that, you know, we're going to be doing quite an extensive programme of road repairs in various parts of the county. And we've got to manage that as well in terms of, you know, the influx of people coming to Derbyshire. So, and we all saw what happened last summer as the restrictions started to ease and the numbers were coming down, is that we had issues with littering and people sort of visiting in very considerable numbers in some parts of the county. So we've got a few management issues, I think, that we need to think about, work through over the course of the coming summer. So I think that's going to be more of a thing that we need to get on with, first of all. I think the staycation market is going to be very healthy, very buoyant. And we're going to have a tremendous number of visitors in Derbyshire. It's about how we extend the season and it's about how we get visitors to come in autumn and winter because we need that season to extend because of the fact that we've lost a considerable amount of income in the earlier part of this year and last year as well. So, yeah, a lot to think about.
You must have mixed emotions looking ahead to the loosening of restrictions in terms of tourism. Like you say, it is quite exciting, but the sheer volume of potential visitors could be quite a nerve wracking factor as well.
It is, yeah. And it's not going to be just nerve wracking in the sense of, you know, worrying about how we're going to manage the numbers of people. It'll be, for some of our communities, it's going to be a worrying time, particularly if, you know, there is still coronavirus cases out there. So, yeah, there's a lot of things we've got to think about, a lot of things we've got to manage. I think it's very important, you know, that we get some key messages out there to people that, you know, if you are coming to Derbyshire, respect our communities, you know, respect the cleanliness of our country lanes and countryside, take your rubbish home with you, make sure you're wearing your mask in the place you need to, make sure you're washing your hands. All these sorts of key messages will need to be driven home during that time. But we absolutely welcome people to Derbyshire. It's just getting the balance right, I think.
Because last summer, there was a big issue, wasn't there, with parking here, there and everywhere? So it seemed, and a lot of litter, as you've mentioned there, which must be difficult for people living in places, you know, for instance, like Edale or Matlock Bath to deal with.
It is, it is. And, you know, obviously, we get a lot of complaints about it as well. And, you know, the districts and boroughs go out and empty the local bins and so on. It's an issue for them. It's, yeah, it's, it'll be a bit of a challenge. You know, it's not insurmountable. We'll work through it. But we need to make sure we're working with our communities and addressing their concerns as well.
And again, just on this topic, as you've mentioned with the management side of things in the Peak District, Chris Gilbert from the Peak District says, he fears that they're going to be overwhelmed with visitors later this year. Can the county council confirm that they'll be reopening their public conveniences in line with the loosening of restrictions?
We absolutely will, yes, yeah, yeah. And making sure as well that they're well serviced for the duration that they are open as well. So, yes, I mean, making sure that public services are available is going to be quite critical. And again, something that we saw last year during that early part of the restrictions easing, when public toilets were closed, it caused us a few problems, I think it's fair to say, across the county. We don't want to see a return to that situation. So, yeah. But, and, you know, we'll have to look at potentially in areas where we're seeing influxes of people of a scale that warrants it, putting in additional facilities perhaps. But we need, we need, we need solutions, you know. That's the only way we're going to get around this.
Moving on then, last question really from our listeners today. Pete McFarlane in Chesterfield asks, will Derbyshire County Council be taking advantage of the £20 million government cash injection announced last month to build more electric vehicle charging points across the county?
We absolutely will. And we've already sort of taken advantage of that with our district and borough colleagues of previous tranches of money. And we're getting towards, I think it's about 200 EV charging points across the county at the moment. And we've got an ambition to ensure that we get 1,000 in Derbyshire over the course of the next, at least the next four years. But I suspect we'll exceed that number as well. And we'll certainly take advantage of any government money that's going to do that. But it's not just about electric vehicles as well. The sort of global economy's switched on very much to hydrogen as well. And so we want to make sure we're working with partners on that. Because what we do have with regard to a particular issue in Derbyshire is our rurality. So we want to make our buses and so on so more sustainable. And we work with our district and borough colleagues to make sure that the bin lorries as well are more sustainable. So, and to be able to do that, it's a combination of electric vehicles, electric buses, electric bin lorries, but maybe also hydrogen ones as well for a longer range and an ability to be able to sort of move larger vehicles over that range. Hydrogen may be the way forward as well. So we're looking very closely at improving our hydrogen infrastructure in Derbyshire as well. So we're looking, when it comes to climate change, we're looking at absolutely every aspect of what we can do as a county to make sure that, you know, we meet our target to decarbonise as a... to decarbonise as a local authority by twenty thirty two or earlier and to decarbonise the county economy in line with the government's aim by twenty fifty.
Besides from the recovery from coronavirus, being environmentally friendly does seem to be the main focus for your party right now, Barry. Would that be fair?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, as a global, you know, there's a very much a global effort around this now to to decarbonise by twenty fifty in line with sort of international targets. And government's very much, you know, pinned its flag to the mast with regard to that. And we as local authorities have done the same. And I think you're absolutely right as well. You know, we're parents and we want a better world for our children. And, you know, a lot of older folk out there in Derbyshire, grandparents will want the same for their grandchildren and so on. And that's and young people are certainly applying the pressure on us to make sure that we are decarbonising our economy. I think it's been a long time overdue, to be honest. And we are moving in that direction. But we've got to do it in a way, as I say, that we bring the general public with us. So they've got to be invested in. It's got to be an incentive for them to do it, you know, to to switch their gas boilers to, you know, to air source heat pumps is not a not a cheap thing to do. So we've got to make sure we do it over a period of time, that we're supporting them in doing that with grants and so on. And it may be that boilers can be adapted in the future if it's hydrogen rather than air source heat pumps and so on. So, you know, it's, we're on a bit of a journey at the minute. But as we know now, because of those targets set internationally and nationally, is that the economies are shifting to meet those targets. So, you know, I I've never been more confident, actually, that we'll do it. That we'll decarbonise our economy by twenty fifty. And, you know, that we'll take better care of our planet and ecological side of it as well. And, you know, we've got an aim as an administration to make sure that by twenty thirty, we plant a million trees or two million trees in Derbyshire, you know, facilitate that in whatever way we can, working with public bodies, private bodies, et cetera, to do that.
Great stuff. And if I could just conclude this Q and A, Barry, by asking a couple of questions of my own. I just wanted to ask you about the flooding, really. Obviously, we've had some incidents earlier this year in twenty twenty one and again, in twenty nineteen, which has impacted Derbyshire just due to the rural nature of the county, hasn't it really? But how confident are you now that Derbyshire is more equipped to deal with instances going forwards? I know from covering both occasions of the flooding, this time around, everybody seemed a lot more prepared. Is that something you take pride in now?
Yes, I mean, our responsiveness to emergencies like that. And it's a shame that we have to be responsive to emergencies like that, really. But what we do has been remarkable. I mean, if you go back to twenty nineteen and the Tobruk Dam incident, which was the sort of heavy rainfall that fell up over Whaley Bridge and affected the infrastructure there, we responded to that, evacuated the town. You know, our emergency planning team at the county council led the, very much led that effort as well. And then we responded again in the in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty to flooding emergencies in in Derbyshire late twenty nineteen, actually, again as well, and also earlier this year. And we've become quite good at it in terms of response. We also put grand schemes in place to help businesses and residents recover from it as well. So i- in that sense, yes, we're doing, we're doing really well. We're working with the Environment Agency as well to make sure that flood alleviation schemes, you know, brought forward as quickly as possible for some of those areas of Derbyshire where they're most critically needed as well. There's lots of ongoing work in that sphere. And again, as an administration, we're committing to working with the communities on on flood responsiveness and and schemes and local schemes. And this is where we can combine the climate change agenda with flood alleviation. There are some innovative schemes being explored explored in the in the Peak District, sort of doing sort of high up damming and interception of water by using plants and trees to stabilise hillsides and and the trees, of course, help sort of drink up that water and 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 lessen the impact downstream. So we're looking at all sorts of things like this. So it's a good combination of of stuff like that. But one thing I will say is that Derbyshire has very much become obvious, has become the new sort of frontline in the in this in this battle against climate change. You know, the floods have affected us in recent years have really highlighted that as well. So that's why we've been keen to make sure that we're on top of this. And while we're keen as a local authority and as an administration that we respond to the to climate change and and, you know, put in sensible measures to respond to that as well.
Speaking to a lot of the residents in Bakewell earlier this year, when the flooding did hit, they were delighted with the response and the efforts being put in by Derbyshire Dales District Council on that occasion. But they were just pleased to see that the preparation was second to none, really. And that must be something that you're pleased with and must hope for more of the same going forwards if we do see more adverse weather.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's that's the raison d'etre of of local authorities is to, you know, provide that help and support to our communities in times of need and emergency. And, you know, as we're seeing through this pandemic as well. So, yeah, it makes me hugely proud to be the leader of the county council and and, you know, makes me hugely proud of all of our staff who've done such remarkable things over the course of the last four years, really, from all sorts, through all sorts of emergencies that we've had. It's a, yes, it's tremendous privilege to to work with such good people.
And just lastly, really, Barry, from me, I wanted to get your immediate reaction to the news yesterday that developed surrounding the rail improvements between Sheffield and Manchester, which will inevitably benefit lines in the Hope Valley. What do you think to all that?
Absolutely. I mean, I wrote along with the leader of High Peak and the local MP, Robert Lagan, both their two governments recently, you know, about rail improvements and and to get that announcement yesterday was, yeah, was tremendously heartwarming. And I think it'll be a real boost to the residents of the Peak District generally, but more particularly High Peak and improve connectivity as well. Yeah, it's, yes, and again, it speaks volumes of the levelling up agenda that the government's been talking about for for quite some time. And we're seeing that evidence now flow through that, you know, they're delivering. And so, yeah, very proud and very excited to see it.
Because the winter months, we often see, don't we, on the on the railway lines, if we'd get, you know, extremely cold weather or a downpour stations in Edale or other High Peak stations in the Hope Valley or Grindelford may, you know, have to close their services for part of the day, which can have an adverse effect on commuters up that way, can't it?
Oh, it can. Massively inconvenient for for residents and communities, commuters alike. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's really important investment. And I hope we see more of the same coming to Derbyshire to support, you know, critical efforts to to improve our infrastructure and and transport infrastructure in particular. It's going to be key, actually, to ensuring we meet our climate change targets.
Brilliant. Well, thank you ever so much for joining us today, Barry.